Order at six thirty-four. And let's do pledge allegiance and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the purpose of this work session is just to brainstorm on kind of what it is we're trying to accomplish in two point oh, I never use that term before, but at that point. So that is what we're here to brainstorm about and so let's.
Brainstorm.
Brainstorm.
You've mentioned some categories, do you want to start with some general broad categories and then kind of start?
That's kind of how I'm thinking of it is, let's start from the user or our customer. What do you call consumers of what we're trying to accomplish?
Audience.
Customer, consumer, they're all equivalent synonymous terms. Each one though conveys slightly different, you know, slightly different content. But I mean, maybe even starting before that broadly, I think our purpose is providing information to broader Manistee community. And I don't even want to go any more specific than that because that, you know, again, we're brainstorming, so we're not trying to limit ourselves, we're trying to broaden ideas and see what's going to be worth to say. But I think that summarizes at a very high level everything we have done and everything we've talked about over the last year or so. So if you start with a broad scope like that, you know, our customers, our users, employers, right, so yeah, it's two-way street. Yep, it's both paths of that. But I kind of want to start with the users because if we can't identify who they are or what they want, then it doesn't matter if they're providers or not because if there's no one to use the information, then the information is not of any value and not worth their time.
I like, you know, in poking around other communities' websites, you're very much a dichotomy, right? You've had like tourism sector, which we talked about last week, and then like limited public information that's put out everywhere, shutdown approach to like Facebook, community websites, city website generally, the city stuff. So a customer would be somebody who can maybe, could talk about.
Well, but even then, I think that, and it's kind of how I worded it, that overall in broadening is people who have an interest in broader Manistee. So obviously, people who live in this immediate area have an interest, but there are people who don't live here who also have an interest. It can be visitors, it can be snowbirds, it can be people in Florida in the winter who want to keep track of what's going on.
People looking to do something in Cadillac this weekend.
Right. Or it can be people who used to live here. I mean, there are all sorts of reasons people have a connection and they possibly are users of information about our community. Now, not every person is going to be interested in everything and that's kind of where talking through this, you know, maybe some things can come to the surface of that, you know, the majority of people will be interested in that as opposed to, yeah, there's a handful of people that are interested in that, but it's probably small and they're working on it. So I guess what types of information could there be? Obviously, from where we've been, content of local government meetings is what HEG has been housed mostly for the last five years, pretty much exclusively that. You go back twenty years and HEG had a lot more role just because it continued to be content of all these other meetings and other information media formatting. So there's basically the doings of our local government. And again, personally, that's one of the reasons I've invested these years in this is that's something that's near and dear to my heart because local government, they're public servants, they serve the voters who elect them. And for that whole process to work effectively, voters need to be informed about what their elected officials are doing and vice versa. The local officials need to understand what the voters are looking for so that there's info, that the process is working. I think too much happens in local government that most people don't know about.
Absolutely.
But that may be by design, it's no question we don't care, in which case you can't force someone to care about something they don't care about.
So local government information loop goes around.
Yep.
The types of info, other community-based organizations, like do you see a broadening like hospital, you know, fire department, police department, that's kind of government, but like.
So I think.
Tourism.
Well, and I think the common theme in all of those is, and again, I'm thinking of this from the consumer standpoint, not the producer standpoint.
Right.
But in the consumer standpoint, again, this is things we've talked about in the past, but to me, and you already wrote a word, events, it's event information.
Right.
It's, you know, what is going on that I might be interested in? And that can come from any source, it's not specific to government entities, it's not specific to tourists and, you know, visitor type events, it can be anything that might interest someone who has an interest in Manistee. So that's, you know, it's in that calendar events type idea. Now, a couple of other things that we talked about last week that, as I said then, scare me, but I think, again, this is brainstorming, is a lot of people like to discuss their community. So that kind of discussion forum aspect is.
Yeah.
It is, you can't not admit that that is something that people are interested in. That's why platforms like Facebook exist.
Right.
Or Twitter, X, whatever it is called today. I mean, those things exist because communities, and those can be a lot of different descriptions, gather people together to converse and there's not a good place for that or, you know, local topics that are related to government or events or all those things.
So you, you like want to agree well.
I did.
You don't want to, an idea.
I said, it scares me, but again, this is, you know, brainstorming about what types of information are out there.
Yeah.
And that's really more where the consumer and the producer are interchangeable, right? Because it's not like someone is, an organization is producing something for that case, it's the people themselves that are generating that discussion of that. But you go back to the local government case, I mean, that's, you know, so government does something, that generates conversation in population about what government did. And again, that's, that's good, that's healthy in a democracy for people discussing things. Now, in our current society, people aren't so polite or, you know.
Yes.
It's, it's still, when it's moderated a little bit, that is healthy discourse.
I'm going back to event info, like I did go to, I'm like that, those ideas that you mentioned.
Yes.
And they have like a lot of, they have some local stuff and they have a lot of mixed other things, like they like back to Manistee, tourism, they went to the vision report, they went to some other sporting event, like sportsmanship type stuff, which I like because there's not consolidated. Like I always have to search to find the buoy temperature, right? But I'm always interested in what the water temperature is and you, well, you, you know, you probably want to know the water temperature, but you got to hurt for it. Like I like that about that website, I thought that that was a really convenient place that draws traffic.
Yeah. No, I think that's great. I, you know, basically a directory of community resources essentially.
Crossput traffic.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's much easier to remember, I don't know where that is, but I know if I go to this place and I just have to remember one thing, I can find it because I was there once and I saw that, or I know that they have lots of resources listed, so maybe it's there, as opposed to trying to Google search like that. What would that be called?
So going back to like, you know, pulling at the string of event info.
Yeah.
Like, not to, not to start with limitations, but do you see like broad, right, that there's a lot of events, like but do you see, like what do you see the rule for what the address can be on this, open to the public, like or could they be only for Korean or Latin sports or not?
Um.
Kind of public.
Yeah.
I'm just like going to your case of moderation and like discussion forums, like you don't want to advocate or have on a public site, essentially like social literacy, it is, I don't know, that's, that's tied, that's another paper, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
But like something that would be, would eliminate part of the population from participation.
Right. So. So I mean, broadly, I agree with your statement that open to the public. There's a lot of gray in that.
Yeah.
Something can be technically open, but in practice, a lot of people would feel uncomfortable, in which case, is that open or not?
Right.
And how do you make those calls? I, again, those are devils in the details.
Right.
But broadly, I would say yes. And I think the most, most of the things that I think of are open, are public events, but that's, you know, and that doesn't mean it's not a private organization that's hosting it, that may not have broad appeal, but that still doesn't mean that you're going to get turned away because you're not a secret member or something.
Right, right.
So yeah, I mean, I think that's, that is a reasonable criteria because if you don't have that, then it gets into, you know, kind of broadly the scope of what we're talking about on this page is now how do you identify that subset to show them the relevant information that group categorizing? And it just, that seems like way too much work and not necessarily what we're trying to do. That's, you know, that's not people interested in broader community.
Right.
That kind of means public.
Personal ideas are that, you were trying to tell me, you shoot it down.
No, 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 we're not supposed to.
No, no, but like Luddington Garage Sales. Relevant?
Um, I would say no. Um, you know, in general, I would say it probably shouldn't happen within the coming boundary. However, since the city is in the, you know, southwest corner of county, there's, you know, there's a township or two in Mason County that's closer to than many parts of Manistee County, so, you know, I, I wouldn't make that a harboring vast geography. But I think if, if it's in, within the city limits of Scottville or Manistee, it's probably not, you know, what we're talking about. And like, you know, if it's Frankfurt, awesome.
Yeah.
And it's kind of like stuff between south of Frankfurt, north of Luddington, and west of Kalam.
Yeah, okay, that's good. And then is archaism actually counted?
Yes. So I, I don't think it has to be strictly county boundaries.
County cluster, probably.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. And can be public, well, public is easy, right?
Yeah.
Hospital, square, senior center, non-local nonprofits.
For profits.
For profits.
For profits.
Well, that's, that's, I think even a private.
Right, right. I mean, a lot of, you know, music events, I mean, Manistee's blessed with a lot of free ones, but, you know, things at the Ramstone, you know, that's kind of a quasi-public nonprofit entity, but they have events that are paid for. I mean, they're, it's not something that we have a lot in this community, but, you know, other areas, you know, larger bars and stuff will have, you know, cover charges on music, you know, acts in their private establishment, that's generally what the public rights of paid for and, you know, event. And that, you know, it seems like a lot of people would be potentially interested in that, even though it does cost. So I don't think it's a matter of it's open to public and it has to be free.
Right.
But.
So private events will open in the public.
Yeah.
Okay. And what about like, what's up with holidays, like Christmas tree cutting, have like less farm, you know, whatever that is, like something like that for example, or kind of other?
I mean, if anything, I mean, whether you consider that an event or not, again, that kind of, it's something that happens for a specific period of time, you know, we often think of events as something that happened, you know, over a couple of hours as opposed to a few weeks, but there are, you know, things that happen over longer periods of time. Now, is that an event? Is that a directory resource listing? You know, you start categorizing things and there are always things that are like, well, it kind of fits in both categories, so what is it? And you have to.
Because if you had a calendar that was like a month view, that would take up like three weeks across and you would just be, it would start to be cluttered.
Right.
So, which we don't like.
We don't like that.
Yes.
But I'm, I'm just trying to think, there are, I can't actually think of something, but I know of something that exists that is considered an event, but is kind of that it happens over a week.
Right.
And it's like, it's just how you convey that information is, goes challenge.
Yeah, especially if people are searching by day and not by category.
Right.
Whereas something like the lighted locks in the state park are over time, but they're specific days of the, of the month. Right. Is there any, what wouldn't you, open to public, what would be appropriate? Is it appropriate to talk about what's not appropriate?
Um, I, I think at this point, it's just to say, there probably are things that are appropriate in either that.
Okay, yeah.
And, you know, as opposed to brainstorming what the rules of things we should exclude is just like, that's just no, there, it's, it would be a task, it would need to get fleshed out as to what would.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I.
Meat, meat making, right? Which is, sounds cool, but, you know, beer and wine and stuff like that.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that's necessarily.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of places, I mean, one of the things that kind of fashionable now are like wine and painting.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the presence of alcohol, I don't think is a.
No, I don't, I don't think, I was just trying to think of something that, or like age, but there's something that like, even in this, I don't think is a limiting factor, like something that has an age limit.
Right, because like, you know, if there's alcohol involved, it's going to be twenty more for a lot of things, so.
Let's think about senior softball for a minute, right? Like sixty-plus. Okay, so event info.
Yeah. It's interesting as we talk through this, at this point, and just, and again, this is kind of where I was coming into this, thinking about, okay, who are the different types of users? We've approached it from what is the information that's available, not who the users are and there's, it's really, anybody potentially could be applicable to all of that. Yes, people have different interests, so it's going to be subsets, but it's not like only this type of person is going to be interested in events.
Yeah, yeah.
Other people aren't going to be interested in events, I don't know, everybody's interested in that. What types of events, that's going to be very specific to that person's interests.
No, I, I do like that, like especially those that remember Manistee that, right, like they always want to circle back, right, and they still do, like I think that's a really good user case example of somebody who's probably not going to come here, but wants to read the information.
Or they come here one week a year.
Yeah.
And this is where they vacation every year and, you know, and during that week, a lot more of this may be relevant and the rest of the year, much less of this, but that doesn't mean they are not potentially interested in your product.
User, very broad, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, again, it's interesting as we've talked about this, that I was just thinking that different classes of users would come out, but I really can't think of any, which actually I think is, makes things easier because then it's more about features and functions.
Right.
And then we just market it out to those that have.
Dare I say build it and they will come?
Well, no. Build it, market it, and they will come.
Right.
But, you know, you can build the best thing in the world, if no one knows it's there, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
And that's, that's been one of our issues is that no one knows HEG exists, or we already have. People occasionally stumble across it.
Right.
But, you know, there needs to be an active promotional effort, like any, you know, you don't start a business and then, you know, hope people discover you by accident, right? You market. And unless people are forced to interact with, like, people are forced to respond to the tax notice they get in a cheaper way, things happen, you know, they're forced to interact with city government in an appropriate ways, but if, you know, if the city was just there, it's like waiting for people to show up to pay their taxes without, it would work, it wouldn't work, so, you know, either you're forced to or you need to be, you know, they had that, hey, this exists, so there's definitely a marketing.
So info is very broad, user base is very broad.
So you mentioned Onakuma that info, and that brought out the whole directory of information about the community aspect. Do they have a calendar?
Oh, they do, yes. They do have.
And that just shows that A, they're hard to maintain.
Right.
And B, if people don't know, I'm curious what mechanism people would use to get on that calendar and.
I think, I think I grabbed the link, the way I'm going to submit button or email.
Okay.
Seventeen thousand unique views annually is what they post on the site, so that's pretty good.
Yeah.
So it's only a day, I suppose.
And I'm assuming there is not any sort of discussion forum?
There is not, a lot of advertising and then links to the other sites, I don't know if any of you, whether you want that.
Probably not.
Yeah, it's written in, but there is advertising, no discussion forum. And even like some of the other ones, like I have visited Trevor Cities, like their public access television, they have a calendar, no discussion forum there that I recall.
Yeah, again.
I'm going to look at that.
It would surprise me, I mean, you know, we, you know, publicly we're aware of, you know, kind of the big platforms that are out there for discussion, Facebook, X, Twitter, but there's all sorts of, you know, private industry niche-specific forums.
Sure.
Reddit's another one, that's kind of broad platform, but then there are, you know, lots of, I mean, there's a lot of forum software out there that does these things. But it's, it's, it's different in the sense that, you know, it just, the feeling or action of a forum is different than kind of these free-flowing, because they're all about, and ultimately, they're all about advertising and generating their revenue streams, which is kind of why Facebook is the way it is, because they've got to make lots of money. We don't necessarily need to fall into that, you know, again, they need to pay bills, but this isn't about money, it's about providing a service to our community.
And maybe the discussion forum could be something that could be fleshed out at two point one.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, again, this is brainstorming and it doesn't mean that everything has to be done on day one, it's just like.
I mean, I think if you can get a calendar up with forty organizations contributing to it and posting to it like that's.
Right, no, I, I think, this is jumping ahead, not brainstorming these, but I think the video piece, because that's where we started from, and I think it's, right now, that is our existing user base. I think the calendar piece, just because it's like, it's almost like the events, the city council meeting is an event and that generates a video or links to newspaper articles or whatever about, you know, that, minutes about it, et cetera. It all kind of ties back to an event. That calendar piece, I think, is a logical step and again, it's something that I've heard, been in discussions in the community about, what we have right now isn't working. What can we do to centralize all these towers of information? But the community directory, that's not something that's popped up in my mind, but I think, A, I don't think that's that hard.
No.
And B, I think it's actually useful and I think those three are doable. And then this discussion piece, like can be layered in.
I mean, just the links in itself consolidated, calendar will drive people to the, to the video.
And even, you think discussion pieces, but let's talk YouTube. YouTube has comment features.
Yes.
I mean, so there are even.
Wouldn't that be something?
Pieces of.
Play the, I guess the YouTube video, you can watch a city council meeting on YouTube.
Right.
And people can comment there, I've never gone and seen the comments.
I get like, you know, maybe five comments a month and none of them are of any consequence.
Yeah.
It's, you know, I, it's like, why did you even bother? But again, I. But, again, I watch other YouTube videos where there's like a thousand comments, because, again, there's an interest in the community, and we're just not there.
Right.
People don't think about, that is the place I should go to discuss what happened at that meeting.
Right.
So, again, it's, it's, marketing is lack of knowledge that that even exists, and, you know. But, again, and just as we're talking, it's like, there are, even, even in some of the video things, there are forums, discussion, they call them comments, I mean, so, I mean, it's all kind of the same thing, it's a place to discuss, you know, or react to something.
I like the trifecta, the video piece, the public governance, the public information of the actual meetings, the calendar of events and local happenings, and then draw people in with consolidated, well-curated links.
Yeah. And then, maybe that forum piece that starts with stuff on videos, because, again, I, I think some of those things probably already features that are there, just they're turning them on and figuring out how they should be used.
For people to get feedback, too.
Right, yeah.
Okay. So, the, I mean, do you wanna flush out a little bit more about how, do you wanna go into marketing, do you wanna go into like next steps?
Well, since you're kind of jumping ahead, I will take your initiative, and, you know, let's talk about the categories that you've kind of pulled out as we've been talking, and we can all come up with other things, and, you know, add to the list, but, there's a roll to you now.
Well, I just said, marketing and promotion, which, you know, you have to build first and get.
Right.
Concurrents.
Right. But I, to me, we're just gonna be, we'll ultimately just utilize the means that people in our community market. So, Facebook, it could be YouTube, again, for each type of our content, there's a natural kind of platform where people are already, you know, existing and just saying, hey, you can get the Manastee version of that over here. Google is its ad platform, maybe people, you know, they sense that they're searching for information, we, we wanna be there. And, you know, then you get into other local outlets that are advertising or marketing-ish. Newspaper, I would say that, you know, it's been my wish that we had a stronger relationship with them, because we're providing them a service by delivering videos, meetings to them, that they can then write articles about. And they have occasionally in the past, in when they use our content, gave us, you know, kind of a shout-out. So, there has been a little bit of that, but that can be fostered and more formalized of, hey, if you're gonna use their content, this is, like, you could do.
I'll call it screens at places, like, static, not static displays, but people that have monitors up in businesses, and even like, I'm sure the hotels, that, you know, the casino hotel, the welcome, like, information about local activities.
Right, right.
So, video feeds.
The war, so then there's, there's, you know, ways people in the, you know, busy area advertise the market, and that's kind of. I don't see this on broadcast television covering all of Northern Michigan on seven and.
Right, right. No, no. But I wanna go back to one that I, like, for example.
Yeah.
Somebody that, in the city that, like, I got one of these, I got one of the trees on the city, fifty-dollar tree, yes, you won't, right? Because an equivalent tree would be more than that. But like, that's not, how do we get something that provides a quality service from the municipal, from the municipality to the people inside of it? I mean, I can't think of another example that Manastee does.
Well.
But that would want to do. Even though, or the, or the bulk disposal, I guess, that could be a challenge, but.
Well, I mean, yeah. Well, within the city, it's, it's your first pick-up each month, so that doesn't work as well, because everyone has a different day.
Right, right.
Yes, it's all during the first week of each month, but that doesn't really work, it's both.
Or when can I get rid of the?
Right, so, that team isn't it, there's a county event, or that, that. Three out of four years, I will forget, it's like, oh, this is the end, it's got my big battery box that I keep throwing these batteries in, it's like, oh, let's take that, it's like, oh, just.
Like a feature of that, a feature, right, like.
Well, I mean. When you say feature, what pops into my head, and I, I know this isn't what you meant, but to me, that means that, that says, hey, if that's what makes it featured, it's like, and I'm not saying that that is a potential thing too, because again, we do have to pay some bills at some point, and therefore, you know, stuff like that, you know, can make sense. But I think that is more just broadly, well, I guess, if you, I've got so many thoughts going through my head right now, I can't, stay on one track. Going back to the beginning, users and producers of information. We've been focusing on users.
Right.
These topics can be branched into producers. How do you get people within the city offices here to say, oh, I should make sure that this is published here, so people know about it? I mean, right now, the city, well, it's on the city website. Or, one step better than that is, things, some things get mentioned on the city Facebook page. So then Facebook's algorithm pushes it to some subset of people, Facebook thinks they can ultimately monetize the content through ads.
Right.
Which is the same thing as getting out to everybody, but, you know, are those the best methods of doing that? No, because I'm, I mean, unless I am thinking about, unless I have a specific question that I know can be answered on the city website, I'm never going to the city website to look at it.
Right.
So therefore, the fact that, you know, services of the city are mentioned there.
No one's gonna get it.
No one's, no one's gonna know it. Now, the city also has the opportunity, twice a year, in their tax bills.
Oh, right.
One pager, you know, it's pretty bad, because usually half of it's relevant, and then the other half is like, I don't need that. You know, so, and, you know, pushing things on Facebook, but I don't use Facebook per se, so I never get that content I get from my wife. So, you know, but as a producer of information and events and services, they have a need to reach everybody within the city limits, is their target audience within those parts. And don't really have an effective way of doing it.
Mm-hmm.
So, how do we get noticed as potentially, oh, I've got this, oh, the first person I should think to is.
Right.
To make sure that it's, whatever it is, it's in our directory, it's in the calendar, it's, whatever it is, is there, because that's going to reach all these people that I wanna reach. But, that is more broadly true in the calendar case of every organization, and organization broadly in this community, how do they know that this exists and we're there? I think that gets back into marketing.
Right.
We're not only marketing to consumers of information, we're also marketing to producers, so that they know to submit their information to us to get to the ultimate consumers. And, I mean, you know, so ultimately, when it comes to marketing promotion, that's an expense that we have, but without it, I don't think it's easy.
Right.
We don't have a built-in mechanism that forces people to probably learn information from us. It has to be out there, there's a certain amount of stuff that organically, you know, word of mouth, et cetera, but that's low. If that's the only thing we rely on, you'd be dead before that ever was effective.
I mean, so, I mean, what I'm gathering, very broad, broad audience, broad categories of content. In terms of the calendar.
Line directory and.
Right, right. That was well-curated, whereas the calendar would be a little more broad to whoever wanted to publish within events.
Right.
Would be able to do so.
But, every one of those organizations that's publishing events may also, you know, those organizations are often providing services as well.
Right.
And.
It's good to that.
Yeah. So, you know, how are they, you know, included, so. Anyway, I think I interrupted.
No, 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 I, I, I'm all over the place too, I mean, I, you know, there's advertising next steps, there is, like, what would, what would be needed? To get approval from the, from the city to do it, have a business plan. You know, and then legal processes, you know, it wouldn't just be a rubber stamp, I'm, I'm just thinking from a.
I don't think anything we're talking about is necessarily, necessarily require legal. I think we would want buy-in at some point from council leaders, as a city commission, they're ultimately our boss.
Right.
But I think there's a chicken and egg there, is, I think we have to flush this out enough, so that when you, when you present something, if all you present are vague ideas.
Actual questions.
You have a problem that it may not be absorbable, it's hard to communicate vague ideas, and sometimes people go off and apply impressions. At the same time, you know, flushing it out to the extent that everything's built and working, and, you know, it's two years from now, is also not the right time to combine it.
Right, right.
So, I don't know what the right point is between those, but I do think you need, most people are visual, and I think you need to be able to show something that's mock-up-ish, or maybe more than a mock-up.
Like storyboards are actual.
I think actual.
On the web.
I think actual on the web.
And not, would you want it to be tailored to Manastee, or just say, like this site and this site, combining those elements, or?
I don't know.
I'm not, I mean, I'm not.
I, I don't know.
Not a programmer.
Right. Again, I, I don't have an answer to that. Well, I think tailored to Manastee is better.
Yeah.
But, again, if that takes six months to do that versus something that could be done in two days, then, you know, that's probably not the right trade-off of what I think of getting your opinions on our next steps.
Yeah.
And I think that is a, a next step that I hadn't thought about, but, you know, it's, it's really circling back and letting council know, you know, what we're talking about, where we're headed. Now, I will say that, hey, does an annual presentation to city council, and actually, maybe the timing would be okay, I mean, we're, we're scheduled in November, that's the timeframe that we're always scheduled to do ours, and maybe that is the right timeframe.
I don't see this to be an issue of having.
Right, no, I think, I think that's far enough out that it gives us flexibility, but it also gives us a deadline to, you know, motivate us of, okay, that's what we're gonna, you know, try to flush out stuff enough to have that coherent conversation. But, what I, what I was gonna say, before I got sidetracked there, is council, even though they are our boss, and in an ideal world, they would be telling us what they wanted us to do. My experience is, having sort of done multiple different city commissions and county as well, is that they don't lead, they react following. So, which makes it even more important that we come with a quality presentation or something to show, because, you know, that will be more favorable than, you know, we don't know what we're doing, you tell us what we should do. Like, we don't know.
Right. So, I, like, I call it, kind of breaking it up, right, like, a statement of the lie, I would say, why, why this, right, why, why it needs to exist? A mission and purpose statement.
Yep.
A definition of users, both consumers of the information and providers of the information.
It's interesting, you said that, I think, going back to where I was starting from, that those are the categories of our users. It's consumers and producers of information, not some other categorization that, for some reason, I thought would evolve out of this, but we have a categorization, it's just.
Yes.
Those two roles that people play.
I mean, people from all over the world could consume your information.
And I, again, in, I can't remember, I remember the guy's name who does Onecoma Dainto. Need to let that out, because every time, every one of these meetings, I refer to him, and I can't think of his name. But he, in one of the conversations I had with him a few years ago, he prided himself on the fact that in the winter, they get more website traffic from outside the community, because the nature of Onecoma is that, I mean, that's the, I mean, that it is a thriving summer community, and then, you know, wherever it's not. But those people have that interest, and they, you know, that is a place for them to go, you know, because the, Onecoma doesn't have it on a newspaper, so, you know, where do you go to find out, you know, what's going on?
Yeah.
So, and he was proud of it, that his user base, you know, was all, even, but again, that's sharing that tie of that. And, you know, again, and this is a problem, and, I've seen this on the Tourism Authority, formerly TBB, is that, when I think broader Manastee, you know, to me, it's like, you've got the city, you've got the county, and then there's a river called the Manastee River that is, you know, half Northern Michigan, you've got National Forest, so it's just kind of these concentric rings, and the name Manastee ties them all together.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you live in Onecoma, and it says Manastee, you're sometimes offended by that, because it's not Manastee slash Onecoma slash Arcadia slash Calabas slash Leatherman slash Boston.
Right, right. Should be the river, the river basin.
They all have their own, and they're proud of their identities.
Right.
So sometimes using Manastee as the name does not.
Does create goodwill.
Create goodwill for those, even though they all live in Manastee County, so, you know, we think innocently, but they say, oh, you just care about the city.
Right, right. Yeah.
And it's like, no, it just logically, it's like, you know, but, again, they all, I mean, again, they, they, they should be proud of their local. And, and again, I, I mention this because the Tourism Authority always deals with this, because they represent, you know, the county, and again, you know.
And they're here, right.
They're, yes, but, you know, so, I know with some of the content that they have in their self-serve at Bush Shore Building Downtown. At West Shore Building Downtown, they've got concepts that kind of try to tie the individual community names together into a broader thing. I can't remember how they're attempting to do that, but again, there are others that deal with the same problem that we can, you know, pick their ideas and, you know.
I never thought about that.
Yeah. And that might impact learning this. Maybe, yeah, again, I have Manastee data info, hash patterning and off of, you know, Nekma data info. But maybe that's not right because, again, it's too limiting, what, what is? So for the longest time, the tourism website was visit Manastee County. And the word county had to be in there because that was inclusive. They also owned this in Manastee, but couldn't use that at the, yes, they used it to redirect to this in Manastee County as, as one of these things. I think recently they have just switched to now using this in Manastee. But again, it's something they've struggled with and I've, you know, been part of some of those conversations. It's just something we should be aware of.
Because there isn't a regional identifier.
Right, it's just, it's convenient for a lot of people just to refer to everything as Manastee. But it also been, it's like, it's almost like a class hierarchy. Well, that means if you don't do Manastee, then you're not at the same level. It's like, no, that's not it, but it's so convenient.
Right, right.
Because everything shares that name.
Too bad you couldn't name it after an intersection like thirty-one and fifty-five. Oh, I know what those are.
Right.
I know, we, like you said, seven thirty, but maybe like for August fifth, which is our next meeting.
No.
It's not.
Because you couldn't make it then.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's the following week.
The twelfth.
Twelfth. The twelfth at six thirty.
Right, thanks for reminding me.
You would have figured it out when you.
Yeah, I know, it's like that, right?
Wait a minute.
So I can come with like some draft, like mission statement, purpose statement, some kind of like a user identifier.
If you could kind of take some of these and turn it in more to a document that's a lit, obviously, everything's got to be a living document that, you know, and, you know. But I think, I personally think in fifty-five minutes, fifty minutes really, we've accomplished a lot.
Yeah.
At least, and this is, and this is what's been frustrating for me over the last two, three years is. You have conversations and then what that does is get people on the same page. But when the people keep changing.
Right, right.
You're always starting over.
Existence is just.
There's really, I mean, some things came up tonight that I hadn't even thought about before, but logically fit. But a lot of this is like, hey, I had some of these conversations five years ago.
Right, right.
And we're still having the same conversations. It's, it's why I really appreciate your, you know, willingness to commit to this for, and to see what we can do. Because it's, it's good. Now, it does worry me if we do get more commission numbers, which we need because more brains. Are we going to be able to, but that's where I think the next step of getting it on paper, then we've got something to hand off and say, you're recruiting. Start with this.
Or actually recruit with and find somebody who's got like UX experience to say, hey, we need you on this committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you do it here now?
Yep.
Yeah, put this together.
That's how that does it. Okay.
All right, good, so the twelfth, I'll have some written out stuff for these things.
Oh, and something else that should be on that list, even though we haven't really talked about it, is really. It's how we're, there's so many different words and they each aren't quite right. Sometimes the word sustainability is used in the sense of, are we going to pay for this? What is, where's the money coming from that offsets the costs involved so that you're sustainable? That word also has a lot of other connotations. Business plan also kind of conveys some of that. But business plan to me is not the right term either, but at some point, we have to have the conversation of, how do we pay for this?
Right, right.
You know, not even knowing what the costs are going to be, it is probably unrealistic that we can do all of this and it costs us nothing.
Right, unless you were.
There is.
Craft developer.
We do have funds, you know, available and we have not spent much over the last five years. And so, you know, we do have a fund balance that has built up some. But, yeah, that can be used to accomplish something, but then the sustainable part comes in of how you keep it going.
Right, and that's what I was, I'm kind of curious about, like, if, if developed with city funding, like, like that advertising.
Right.
Can that be done on something that has those ties? That's what I, I'm sort of like a legal review, that's what I was thinking. Because you do have to, you do have to generate something to kind of pay for it.
Right. Or, yes, you have to have income. Now, could that be, you know, an allotment from the city and from by the way, and Manastee County, like we used to operate from? Or is it looking at our producers?
Yeah.
Consumers, it's hard to get them to cough up money for something if you really want it to be free to them so that they're as broad as possible. But, you know, there are, there are different ways.
They need, they need to hear, producers need to hear, I saw it on the calendar.
Right, yeah.
That's what they need to hear.
Yes.
I heard about this.
And for putting roadblocks in place that prevents as many consumers as possible, that makes less viable producers, which, you know, it's just kind of a whole spiral down.
Well, good deal.
Okay. So I think with that, this was a good conversation and we can adjourn at seven thirty-one.
Good deal, thank you.